Okay, everyone, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I was messing with my head. Okay, Steve, can you help us out with the roll call, please?
Certainly. Alderman's slogan is on the phone. Are you there?
Yes, he's here.
Okay. Baron is not here. Valdi?
I'm here, I'm sorry.
Dean?
Here.
Grimmer?
Here.
Kassen?
Here.
Iker?
Here.
And Mayor Atwell?
Present.
And Administrator Hafner?
Here.
And Attorney Hambus?
Present.
Great. Okay, we are going into closed session for matters for possible closed session. The common counsel may convene in the closed session pursuant to provision of Wisconsin statute 19.851E conferring with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, more specifically to discuss the Heartland Sportsman's Club litigation. The counsel will reconvene in open session after completion of the closed session to consider the balance of the agenda. For a discussion of possible action regarding conditional use permit for the Heartland Sports Club located at 701 Maple Avenue, Delphill, D E L C 0825.994.
I'll move to convene into closed section.
I will.
Is that second?
Move.
Second.
I'll second.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman's slogan. Valdi?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Grimmer?
Aye.
Kassen?
Aye.
And Iker?
Aye.
Six yeses.
Would someone like to make a motion regarding 4A?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the Heartland Sportsman's Club as written in the packet on November 9th with the understanding that the council and the plan commission had issued a permit on March 2nd of 2020 that reflected its intent to comply with the safety standards and impact on neighboring properties that we felt was appropriate and that the attached, the conditional use permit being approved tonight is in compliance with a court ordered mandate and that's it.
I'll second the motion and second Alderman Iker's comments.
Okay. We can do a roll call vote.
Discussion first?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You know, I have no doubt that the council will probably vote in favor of the motion to approve the CUP, obviously to hopefully avoid contempt of court charges, but I can't as the representative for this area vote for this knowing that I believe there's some inconsistencies in the original application. So, and Alderman Iker in the past has pointed out, and I agree with him, sometimes as Alderman, there isn't any discussion and all of a sudden we either vote no or we vote present without explaining why. So I want to make sure that I put on record and I've written it entirely out so I don't have to go through the whole thing, but what I'm against on this CUP and I'll just highlight it, but I assume that this can go into the minutes, the entire packet if it's highlighted, and I've sent you the electronic version of it, Steve?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so I don't want to have to go through and read the whole thing, make sure it's in the minutes. But just quickly, the club has stated in their application that their judges asked us to follow that they were a non-commercial, nonprofit 501(c)(4). It was stated on page four of their first application, page 11 on the second, but 23 days earlier, they were, their nonprofit status was revoked by the IRS, and I've got the documentation in here. They also said that they had been continuously operated since 1950, and I've got the court, or the records from the state of Wisconsin where how many times the state of Wisconsin pulled their non-stock status with the state as a corporation, failure to file certain forms in as far back '85, '90, '95, so they were not in continuous operation. They also stated that they spent two pages going through their documentation saying that they do not have a harmful effect on property values, yet they had their own property devalued, and it came to us in 2010, asking that the property be devalued because of the cost of lead contamination cleanup and the other impact of a gun club in the area. The city has lost over $60,000 in its share of revenue by having the gun club devalued as far as their property. So if we follow 52-138 of our code about our, what's required for a CUP, they have violated the intent of not being harmful, not being adverse to the property and to the neighborhood. They also had other numerous statements. They are in violation of what the state puts together for what is required for hunting clubs to be able to be considered nonprofit. So I put that as evidence in there. They are required by the state to train 25 people per year minimum in hunter safety, and as they testified in front of us, they've trained none in the last 10 years. They have not paid their taxes on membership. Membership in clubs are taxable if they are not considered a nonprofit and trained 25 people, which they have done neither. So for those reasons that I've put in here, I can't vote for it, and I just believe that it's a fraud of an application, and those are my reasons for when I vote voting no against this. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'll follow up and comment that going back to, I think it might be the only
Well, I'll follow up and comment that going back to, I think I might be the only councilperson here that was present when this initial CUP was denied back about 10 years ago and I had the full intent of voting in favor of it at the time based on what I thought was a reasonable safety standard that was presented. And during the deliberations and the questions, they had indicated that given a reasonable shooter at the trap site at least, that they saw that their, their club design as presented was not set up to prevent shots from leaving the grounds and that's exactly what we had asked them to prevent. And so that's why I changed my vote back then. I don't believe it was fairly captured in some of the litigation and discussions we've had, had since, but at the time, back, like I said, again, 10 years ago, they had been undergoing some significant community outreach as far as actual gun safety, working with the Park and Rec Commission to see what they could do to increase community awareness about their presence and the things that they could do. And it's very unfortunate that all that fell to the side and I'm hoping that should this pass tonight, that they continue if they do operate with the spirit that they are in fact a community service and that they respect their neighbors and work with them very, very closely to provide some harmony that isn't necessarily written into the CUP or their business plan of operation and that they just work with their neighbors and try to create an atmosphere that can be mutually beneficial. And, you know, it's like I said, it's not in the CUP, it's close to what we wanted in March, but we are where we are.
Well, I appreciate that. I wanted to remind you that I sat here as a citizen in 1998 and said, "Do not annex this club, they will sue you, it's a lawsuit waiting to happen." I was right. In April of 2010, I sat here and said, "This club is unsafe, somebody will get hurt," and the next day, a lady was shot. I had predicted what was going to happen with this club and I'll tell you, I think what they're going to do is I still think that they're going to just follow, try and follow the Range Protection Act and open from 6:00 AM in the morning to 11 o'clock at night. So, just putting that on the record and we'll see if I can be three for three in my predictions.
Well, I hope you're wrong, just for the sake of the city and the people who live nearby. I will be supporting the motion only to save the city from being fined $1,000 a day and that is the only reason. I don't see that this club has shown any inclination to increase safety or honor the people around them and, but I feel very strongly that we are between a rock and a hard place. We do not have an option at this moment to do anything else, so shame on them, they've not been good neighbors.
Any other comments?
Mayor?
You can't.
I cannot speak.
No. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Do you want to mention that Alderson Baron?
What is the motion since I walked in?
To approve the CUP.
Okay.
Okay, just for the record, Alderson Baron is now present. So the motion is to approve. Alderson Saloga?
Aye.
Alderson Baron?
Aye.
Valdi?
Aye.
Dean?
No.
Grimmer?
Aye.
Casson?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to the published agenda, which I believe moves us to report of city officials. Administrator, Tom?
Yeah, Alderman Casson asked for an update regarding the city's routes to recovery reimbursement requests. He noted through League of Wisconsin Municipality noticed that the deadline for expenses was revised, it was originally November 6th and it was changed to November 17th and he was asking what additional expenses that would allow the city to request and the answer is another week's or another two weeks' worth of police payroll expenses. This has been a interesting program to administer. It started off when it was initially created as a very narrow scope of eligible expenses. It only involved expenses that weren't included in the budget and it was looking as if both us and most municipalities, we're going to have a hard time coming up with eligible expenses to claim the full allotment. The city's allotment in the program was a little over $116,000. Over time, the state has significantly eased the restrictions on this and it got to the point where in late September, one of the restrictions that they eased is any and all police payroll and benefits is eligible. So, I mean, it went to the point where we'd have a hard time coming up with $116,000 to now we're applying for probably somewhere in the area of about $1.5 million, still only expecting to get the $116,000, but there is some indication that some municipalities haven't claimed any of their share so far and if that continues to be the case, there may be some money left over that they may allocate to communities that have requested more than their allocation, so that's the status of that. Any questions on that?
I'm sorry if I missed it, did you say when we would get the money?
So we've received our first two reimbursement requests so far, which was, I think so far we've received about $80,000 and I would expect to receive the final amount, you know, roughly about a month after our reimbursement request has been the track record.
Could you submit just whatever worksheet you had to submit to us as far, just share with us and the public as far as what we submitted as far as eligible expenses?
It's a spreadsheet that's, I think it's probably 30,000 lines.
Is it really?
Yes.
And that's just for us?
Just for the city of Dellafield.
Right, could you submit a...
A summary?
A brief summary of what we're... I mean, I'm really frankly interested in what the state opened up as far as what they feel is eligible expenses, how it translated to us and...
I mean, bottom line is out of 1.5 million that we're asking, over 1.4 million of it is police salary and benefits.
Okay, all right, fair enough. That, I, actually, I need nothing further than that, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up, Tom. And one of the reasons I brought it up was that, it was my understanding and you can tell me if I'm wrong, the league had indicated because some municipalities had not declared any of these funds, they were allowing us to go back and again expand perhaps past the 116, I don't know what the dollar mark is, but to expand to new possibilities as far as, you know, other expenses in the city, I forget exactly what the word was, but...
Yeah, my impression is that they're doing everything they can to make it as easy as possible for every community to get their allocation.
Okay. Oh, you said we've got a million, how much submitted?
1.5 million, we're only expecting to receive 116,000. That's all.
Yeah, I usually have a problem with taking more than our fair share, but in light of police in the hospital in the last couple of weeks, I'll take whatever they want to give us.
And so when might we hear about the balance? After the 116,000?
State says, "Please know we offer no commitments, these expenses will be reimbursed." When they talk about expenses above and beyond your allocation. However, in the event all funds are not utilized during this final reporting period of routes to recovery, there may be additional reimbursement eligible. Again, we make no commitment, this will occur as final counts are unknown.
So no timeline?
Correct.
Just as an update too and an aside, the Dellafield police officer was released from the hospital, he's home convalescing. So I was very happy to hear that.
Great. Okay, seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 7:03 PM.